Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. And we are delighted you took time out of your schedule to join us tonight. You can follow along the agenda on the screen, or if you are at home, you can go to our website and pull up Board Docs and follow along there. There will be two opportunities to address the Board this evening. The first being Agenda Item 6.1, the first set of public comments is relative to Agenda Item 7.1 through 11.2. Please state the agenda items you are referencing at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is Agenda Item 12.1. There is a sign-up sheet located on the back table of the room, and each speaker will have five minutes to address the Board. With that, Ms. Marshall, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Bell?
Here.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Here.
Ms. Cotter?
Here.
Mr. Valardo is absent. Mrs. Davidson?
Will you please join us in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's turn this back on. 3.1, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Education meeting held January 28, 2019? So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Ms. Marshall?
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. And up next, district highlights and recognitions, and we're going to turn it over to Mr. Bell.
I'm supposed to go there?
Yeah.
Good evening, President Davidson, members of the Board, Dr. Kellogg, Ms. Marshall. We have a couple of special recognitions that we would like to do at this time. The first is for the 2018 Sanford Teacher Award, and at this time, if Mr. Earl Rahm, who is the principal at Alcott, if he would please come up at this time.
Good evening, President Davidson, Dr. Kellogg, members of the Board, and Ms. Marshall. Thank you for the opportunity to come here this evening and recognize Lynda Amici. Lynda is a 5th grade teacher at Alcott Elementary and is the recipient of the 2018 Sanford Teacher Award, sponsored by the Sanford Programs of National University System. The award recognizes and rewards one teacher from each state, as well as the District of Columbia, who exemplifies inspiring teaching through their enthusiasm for teaching, empathy, and warmth toward all students, fostering positive relations with all students, creating positive learning environments, recognizing student needs. As a state winner, Mrs. Amici received a $10,000 award and a gift bag. She also is eligible to become a national recipient of the Sanford Teacher Award, which includes an additional cash prize that adds up to the grand prize total of $50,000. The national winner will be named sometime in early 2019, which I checked as of today and I haven't heard anything. The first ever Sanford Teacher Award is initiative of the National University System, a network of private, nonprofit, pre-college, and higher education institutions. The National University System is based out of Lojoila, California, and home to one of the top 10 largest schools of education in the country, the Sanford College of Education, offering both online and campus-based programs, with more than 165,000 alumni around the world, the country, and the world. Please join me in congratulating Lynda Amici.
Next, we will have a recognition of some of our very outstanding students who have demonstrated both a tremendous amount of commitment to a cause and loyalty to a cause. So at this time, if Debbie Pellington and Kaylee Bart Baker, if you would please come at this time.
President Davidson, and members of the Board, Superintendent Kellogg, and Treasurer Marshall, thank you for including us in your meeting this evening and for recognizing these wonderful students. Four years ago, our 7th grade social studies students engaged in an exercise to learn about the legislative process and the importance of symbolism in cultures in preparation for a field trip to the State House. Students came up with state symbols for Ohio and created mock bill proposals. Anna, Sarah, Rachel, and Adrian quickly identified the barn as a symbol of Ohio's diversity and rich economic and cultural history. Their thorough research and thoughtful proposal caught the eye of Representative Ann Gonzalez, who introduced the bill to the House shortly after our field trip. And for four years, the group worked diligently, creating grassroots campaign efforts, giving testimony in support of their bill to House and Senate committees, speaking to experts in history and archaeology at Ohio Statehood Day, connecting with organizations throughout the state to garner support, and even standing firm in their beliefs when questioned by legislators. Picture that. Young women, 13 years old, standing up for their bill and supporting their opinions with solid reasoning in front of some of the most influential people of the state. That is a powerful image. As a result of their hard work and persistence, we in Westerville now have a group of students, women under 18 years of age, who have successfully made a bill into a law. But this couldn't have been done without the learning environment created by and support given by our incredible educators. Throughout the four years, we have time and time again been able to work with teachers and administrators who inherently understood the remarkable situation that this group was in and lent their support however they could, from helping to spread the word about the bill to making sure that the students could get to the State House when they needed to. This support was invaluable to the successful passage of the bill, and this bill is a testament to our great school district and to this wonderful group of young women. And now, I think Sarah and Adrian would like to say something.
Eric Sloan, the author of "An Age of Barns," said those who seek the spirit of America might do well to look first to the countryside. When we started this project in 7th grade, the countryside and barns were the first place we looked for a symbol to represent Ohio. The barn was perfect for this endeavor. It is one of the only structures represented in each of the 88 counties of Ohio, and the fact that there is no one shared architectural style of barn reflects the rich cultural traits that make up Ohio. Barns also help tell Ohio's stories over the last several hundred years. Barns have been crucial, a crucial part to creating the Ohio we know and love today. And through Ohio barns, we can learn a great deal about the people who built them, their place of origin, and their cultural history. Barns help us connect to the life and the work of our communities through the generations. As our communities become more urban, we can preserve these barns that pay homage to our heritage, such as the barns used by Ohio farmers today. Senate Bill 86 will accomplish this by raising awareness and appreciation for barns of the past and present. This opportunity has been invaluable to us. We have not only learned about the government, but perseverance, hard work, and overcoming obstacles to achieve a goal. We would like to thank all of you for your support throughout this process. This would not have been possible without the encouragement and enthusiasm we have received from the community. Thank you for this recognition.
And I think I certainly didn't, and I don't know if anyone else did truly see the potential that we inevitably came upon when we came up with this idea. I think the ability for us to work through this project, to overcome so many obstacles, and to work with such an incredible group, not only with our peers, but with our teachers, our parents, the entire Westerville community, and representatives from all over the state of Ohio, this project has turned into so much more than what we first saw it as. And I think I, both I and all of us can really say thank you for recognizing this incredible opportunity that we've been given.
So please join me in celebrating. Anna Borders, Sarah Gelner, Rachel Kaufman, and Adrian Thompson.
and allow us an opportunity to recognize you and thank you as well. All of the families. Thank you. You can certainly be proud of your daughters. Thank you.
For reports tonight, 5.1, Black History Month, and I think Dr. Kellogg's going to talk to us about this.
Thank you, President Davidson. I wish the students had left so early. I was going to ask them if we could start working on a school funding bill for the next round, see if we could get pull out of that one. They were successful there. I just want to take a minute this evening to share some information. February, of course, is Black History Month, and it's a celebration in our country of contributions of Black Americans to our history, and it's a wonderful learning opportunity at all of our schools. And I'm always very proud to see exactly what we have going on in various buildings. And I thought I'd share some of this so the public would see some of the events going on. In some cases, there are events that are public, particularly middle schools and high schools. In some cases, particularly elementary schools, it's more embedded in the curriculum. So just a couple of highlights. For example, the three high schools, at Central High School, they're having the evening and assemblies during the day. On February 13th, there's their evening program. It's $5 admissions at the door. This year's theme is social justice. They're going to, the performance uses drama, spoken word, poetry, music, and dancing intertwined with relevant historical incidents as a medium to explore the role of social media as a catalyst for social justice in 21st century. So it looks like a powerful program. I know they had a very, a nice program last year. South High School is having a Black History Month program for the public on Thursday, the 22nd, and Friday, the 23rd, two events. Their show will explore contributions African-Americans to the lens of adolescent development, adolescent development of personal identity. So they're using these pretty powerful, big-picture things, right? It's pretty exciting. I didn't get all the information from Westerville North. I know they had to change the date of their event, but they're doing a public event on the 26th of February, so if you're interested in that one. At some of our middle schools, at London Middle School, they do a Black History Month celebration and dinner on Friday, excuse me, February 13th, and that's actually at Westerville South from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. So it's at the high school, because they're anticipating a large group, so it's a night, you don't have to cook dinner if you go to that one. And they're doing announcements during the, each day during the week, during the month, recognizing famous African-Americans as well. Genoa Middle School, their Black History Month Club is led by Mrs. Thompson, and at Genoa Middle School, they are planning a Black History Month and cultural celebration on the evening of February 27th, and this is, families are invited to participate in display of performance art, ethnic dining, and cultural music. Heritage Middle School is participating in an African-American read-aloud day on February 27th in all their English and Language Arts classes. This is a national event sponsored by the National Council of Teachers of English. And they're also holding a spirited, as they wrote, and informational Black History Month Assembly, which aligns with the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History theme for 2019. And then at Walnut Springs, the highlight of the month is their Black History Month Celebration. I went to this last year, it was fabulous, which takes place on Tuesday, February 26th at 6:30 there at Walnut Springs. Feature performances from their jazz band, as well as the Audubon Jazz Band, performance of a variety of students, as well as a full dinner inspired by African-American culture. There'll be, the night will also feature a presentation from a nationally-recognized illustrator, Brian Collier, who will be working with their students during the day and the featured speaker at their event. So lots of cool stuff going on, middle school and high school. At the elementary schools, I won't read through all of them, but a lot of integration into the regular curriculum, music curriculum, et cetera, English Language Arts, Social Studies. They're doing a lot, a variety of different things at all the various elementary schools as well. So a lot going on in this month in our schools, recognition of Black History Month. I appreciate their attention to this and look forward to attending some of the events at some of the secondary schools in the coming weeks. So all of those, I think, are on the school calendars or district calendars. If people want to attend, then check those out. So I just thought it'd be nice to hear all the great work our schools are doing in honor of Black History Month. So thank you for letting me have a few minutes to do that this evening.
Up next, 6.1, public comments. We do not have any. 7.1, financials. Amend annual appropriations. May I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
And Ms. Marshall, do you want to talk to us about this?
Yeah, so we have several amendments for the fiscal year 19 annual appropriations. The majority of the amendments are due to additional grant allocations that we're receiving through some of our state and federal grants, and then we also have some local grants. We have a couple of additional budget requests as well in our public school support funds and our district managed activities athletic funds. I do have a significant ask in the general fund with the appropriations, and I've asked Mr. Dorn to come up and explain his request, which is part of it, and then Ms. Barbara Wallace will come up and explain the special ed part of it.
Good evening. Good evening, President Davidson, members of the Board, Dr. Kellogg, Ms. Marshall. I am first happy to report that with our My Van program, we are on target for a cost avoidance of more than $575,000 this year. The My Van program is currently serving 161 of the 251 students who require specialized transportation needs. However, there are 90 students with specialized transportation needs who are not able to be part of that program, based on varying factors and are still being transported by TriStar. This creates a situational expense based on current student needs at any given point in time and is not controllable by the Transportation Department. At this time, we are above the original forecasted number of students riding in TriStar by 36 students, and the student count is increasing each month. The initial budget was established with an anticipated increase of 10 students from previous years, but we are at 3.5 times that increase at the beginning of February this year. The original appropriation for this category was 455,000. We are requesting an additional 275,000 to be appropriated, bringing the total to 730,000. Do you have any specific questions I might be able to answer?
Not so much about this evening's request, but as we look forward, do you anticipate increasing our internal capacities to transport special education children in the future? My Van has been very successful thus far, and as you said, we've seen over half a million dollars in cost avoidance. I'm wondering, as we look forward and as we look at the increasing numbers of students that we need to transport who have a variety of needs, if we think it makes sense for us as we look toward future appropriations and future needs to look at increasing our internal capacities?
Well, with this year's numbers, there are 27 students who, based on varying logistical reasons, were not able to fit into the My Van program, who possibly could down the road if we were able to expand the program from that standpoint. All of the other students, if we were going to include them, we might need some different vehicles, some specialized cars with barrier cars or things like that. Many of those students are ride-alone. Probably what's unlikely would be our displaced students to be pulled into that program, but yes, we possibly could. And we've had conversations about whether or not, just like we purchased vans, maybe we should purchase our own single-car vehicles. But I think we really need to get this, you know, we're on a nice trend with this particular piece. We want to make sure we've got that rock solid before we want to expand it. But it is probably possible in the future to do some expansion.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Okay.
Good evening, President Davidson, members of the Board, Dr. Kellogg, Ms. Marshall. I'm here tonight to explain the request to amend appropriations for out-of-district student placements. Estimating funds for this line is difficult. Our students and their needs are not predictable. We cannot anticipate move-in student needs or court placements. In 2016-17, we had 21 students in out-of-district placements. The cost of their services ranged from $1,890 to $57,478, for a total in the budget of In 2017-18, we served only 18 students in out-of-district placements. The range of their services cost from $4,023 to $48,440, for a total of $535,031. To date this year, we have 15 students in out-of-district placements. The range of costs for these students is $22,600 to $80,000. Total so far this year is $557,500, with an additional $40,000 in expenses already at hand. Given that it's just February, we anticipate that we will need more funds. We have requested enough funds, more than enough funds, to hope that we don't have to come and request more funds again this year. It's possible we'll not get another need. It's possible the court could place two kids here. That could cost us another $100,000. It's just very difficult to predict, and we seem to have been going along very nice and smoothly, and then we had a bump. Questions?
I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. So I think it's important to mention that both Scott and Barbara do a really nice job of tracking this as we go. So this is something that, you know, throughout the year, as they've looked at this, they knew was coming, and so that's why we're asking for it now. 275,000 of that request is for the transportation piece, and the other 250,000 is for the special ed piece. And like Barbara said, if we don't use it, I mean, if we don't need it, it won't be used, so.
What's the district managed activities?
That's the athletic fund. It's additional budget request for the, where they do fundraisers and things, and so.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Up next is our personnel consent agenda. If everyone's okay, I'd like to do 8.1 through 8.9. You okay with that, if I ask for a motion for this?
Yes.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Paul?
Good evening, President Davidson, members of the Board, Dr. Kellogg, Ms. Marshall. I'd like to present for your consideration the Personnel Consent Agenda. Some of the highlights of the consent agenda are as follows. We have 10 resignations from various classified and classified substitute activity positions, one one-time payment for staff to serve as evaluators for our gifted identification at an upcoming visual performing arts event. We have the employment of five individuals in various classified and classified substitute positions, and the employment of a new intervention specialist, as well as individuals in a number of supplemental contract and classified pupil activity programs, which at this time of year also includes some summer school assignments. I'd also like to draw your attention at the bottom there to note that we are recommending a clarification to the AAS guidelines to align the language in the document with the appendix. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Nope, no questions. Thank you.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Old business, and if everyone is okay, since we already did a first reading on this, I would like to bundle the 9.1 through 9.8. May I have a motion for old business, please?
So moved.
Second. Any questions, comments, clarification? Nope. Ms. Marshall?
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Okay, new business, 10.1, first reading, policy 2261.03, district school report card. Oh, Dr. Reebek?
Looks like I'm presenting physical education policy tonight, but I was playing as dad tonight, so.
Good for you.
Okay, all right, thank you. So this is actually the first reading on the school report card, and we're going to be rescinding the prior report card that was more aligned to No Child Left Behind, and we're gearing it towards ESA. And really, if I were to boil it down to one major point, is we need to make sure that we're communicating out to our stakeholders what is presented to us by ODE, and making sure that we're making it accessible and communicating out through various means. That's it in a nutshell. And of course, we did update the administrative guidelines to make sure that how we go about that communication is within our guidelines. We kept policy that way, and then guidelines, how we're going to do it.
Very good.
Any questions or comments? And this is really 10.1 and 10.2. You've talked about rescinding the second one.
We covered both.
So you covered them? No? Okay. Great, thank you so much.
I'll run back to the back.
All right.
Some point.
10.3, first reading for the academic calendar for 2020, 2021. I can't believe it. Mr. Rebrands?
Good evening, President Davidson, members of the Board, Dr. Kellogg, Ms. Marshall. Before you this evening is the Calendar Committee's recommendation for the 2020-2021 academic calendar. Our typical practice has been to have academic calendars approved to school years in advance, and so the approval of this calendar puts us back onto that cycle after a slight deviation last year due to a committee's desire to survey, conduct a survey, different calendar considerations. So this calendar continues the practice of not starting the school year with a full five-day week for students. It exceeds the number of instructional hours required by the state and includes time to address any calamity days or unforeseen events that might impact the school days when we are in session. The first semester on this calendar ends prior to winter break. It provides 16 calendar days of a break for staff, 17 calendar days of a break for students, and the school year ends the week prior to Memorial Day, which is something that we have tried to do on our most recent calendars. Spring break on this calendar begins Spring break on this calendar begins during the last full week of March, and classes then resume on April 6th. This proposed calendar incorporates professional days on August 10th and November 3rd, which we have had in the past. And there are four early release days, September 24th, November 12th, January 28th, and March 11th. So given the way that the dates fell in this particular calendar, they finally worked in our favor, which was, which was nice, in order to avoid ending the academic year early and too far removed from when graduation occurs. And given the length of the second semester, we were able to incorporate some extended weekends around recognized holidays and breaks. So there are four-day weekends built around Martin Luther King Junior Day on January 18th, President's Day on February 2015th, and an additional day at the end of spring break, which on this calendar happens to incorporate a holiday weekend. And feedback we've received in the past is this involves some extended travel for a lot of families, so that extra day is appreciated by many. Representatives from each of the district's employee association and other areas of operations, such as transportation and testing, communications, as well as a representative from parent council are all invited to participate on the calendar committee each year. So we have a pretty good group of representative individuals from all of our different stakeholders. So the second reading of this, with this being the first reading, the second reading, given the way our board meetings fall in March, would not be until April 8th. And that is to allow the 30-day window required by the state for public consideration of the proposed calendar. With that, entertain any questions.
So if the public wants to give you input, how would they do that?
They'll have the information available on the website. Electronic communication is always best, so.
Yep. Okay. Great, looks good. Thank you so much. 11.1, May I have a motion to approve bus purchases for fiscal year 19?
So moved.
Second.
And Mr. Dorn is going to join us again.
This resolution is requesting the authorization to purchase five buses from Cardinal Bus Sales and Services for $438,329. The five new buses will replace existing buses that will be retired from our fleet. We operate on a 14-year replacement cycle as recommended by our 2004 state audit, and we need to replace these buses under those guidelines. Funding for these vehicles will come from the capital improvements levy from 2009. The buses were bid through Meta Solutions Cooperative with Cardinal Bus Service Sales and Service identified as the lowest responsible bid for the 72-passenger buses. The cost per 72-passenger conventional propane bus is $85,894. And for the 72-passenger conventional propane bus with lift, the cost is $94,753. It is recommended that the board approve the purchase of the four 72-passenger conventional propane and one 72-passenger conventional propane with lift buses from Cardinal Bus Sales and Service, Inc. for a total of $438,329.
Questions, Scott. The 14-year replacement cycle. Off the top of your head, if you have thoughts on this, are we still finding that to be appropriate?
Well, it's sometimes a challenge. I don't want to say a challenge to meet it because we meet it, but what we're finding to be actually difficult is, one year it's three buses, and then five years later it's 16 buses. And so it makes the budgeting a challenge. We've actually spent, the transportation team's actually spent quite a bit of time for, well, we're looking at our five-year capital plan, the next five-year capital plan. They've actually expanded it to 10 to see how that could play out in terms of leveling that field out. It also gives us an opportunity to buy buses earlier at a lower price when you buy them earlier. And what we're looking at is actually dropping that down to about a 13-and-a-half-year average on the replacement cycle. So we definitely feel better with that average than we would at, say, 14.5, just based on the, you know, the buses that we have. We have 120 buses in our fleet, and so if you think about that in a 14-year replacement cycle, you're about eight-and-a-half buses a year. So we've got some catching up to do because I'd say in about five years, we've got this string of 15, 16, 14 buses in a given year. So we're really looking at those numbers pretty hard right now.
Good, I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. I've been a little concerned about that fairly hard and fast guidance that we've been following on the 14-year.
We're looking at something similar for our, what we call our white fleet, the maintenance vehicles. That 14-year cycle actually requires a significant amount of maintenance for us, upkeep and things like that. And so we're actually looking at a seven-year cycle where we think we'll save money rather than keeping them for 14 years, based on the resale of them after seven. So we're flirting with that right now, and the numbers look pretty good, but you'll hear from us on that when we get those things nailed down.
That's good. When we talk about, you know, keeping the vehicles 14 years, on the surface, that feels really good, and it sounds really good, but in some ways, I've been concerned that there are instances where it's been false economy.
Right, absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. 11.2, Overnight and Out-of-State Field Trips. May I have a motion?
So.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Let's, we didn't vote, did we?
We didn't vote, did we?
I apologize. We're moving.
We're just so happy with it.
I was looking up at the clock, I'm like, wow. We are moving along.
Are you ready?
Yes, I apologize.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Okay, let's start again. May I have a motion for 11.2?
So moved. Second.
Looks like the kids are going some amazing places, if you look on here. Any information for us, Dr. Kellogg, on any of these? I noticed this global classroom, that's new, right?
Yeah, the Global Studies Program, which we've been a big player in at all three high schools, is exciting to see our students participating now, and some of our students participating in these trips. Also, shout out to Heritage Middle School Future City Team. I think that's this weekend in DC. I've experienced that before. My son was on a team in Bexley in 7th grade. It is something phenomenal. Watch this. It'll blow you away what these young people do in these events. And then I know Mr. Velardo is going to be sad that he's not available for the spring trip with South to Rome and Sorrento, Sorrento.
Oh, he's going.
Yeah. So, yeah, just exciting to see those trips and really, good luck to Heritage in DC. That's going to be awesome.
Get somebody to take video so we can put it on YouTube of some of the great things that are going on on the 16th with the Heritage Crew.
We will ask someone, it's not hard to do that anymore.
No, it's not.
Since it's right on your phone, so we'll see if we can.
It's more a question of remembering it and getting stuff that's usable.
We'll do a live, you know, social media feed for everybody to watch.
That would be so cool.
It is, if you've never experienced Future City competition, it is something else, something else.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
We do not have any public comments?